Meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, serving as Chair this year. To my left is our Vice Chair, Krista Yocum, and Commissioner Rick Vest, and to my right, Commissioner Roma Amundson. If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd begin the agenda, please.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all material to be discussed at this open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 3, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. Any comments or corrections? Call a roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next are claims, approval of all claims processed through May 10, 2022, and this needs to be amended to include payroll ending on May 4, 2022.
I move approval of the claims, including payroll, through May 4, 2022.
Second. Okay, call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number three, special presentations. First one is recognition of Mark Hosking, Emergency Management Deputy Director for his work as a ground support unit leader on the Nebraska Incident Management Assistance Team during the Road 739 fire in Gospur and Furnace Counties.
Good morning, Jim David, Sabre Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize Mark officially for his contribution a few weeks ago to the fire out there. He certainly distinguished himself among his peers locally, and this is recognition that he's done that at the state level as well. And I appreciate the board adding it to its agenda, so again, we could thank Mark as he deserves to be.
Right. Mr. Clerk, is there a letter you'd like to read? There we go. Explains a little bit more in detail.
I want to take the time to thank you for your willingness to allow Deputy Emergency Manager Mark Hosking to participate on the Nebraska Incident Management Assistance Team providing support to the Road 739 fire in Gospur and Furnace Counties, which began on Thursday, April 7. Mark has spent countless hours training in preparation to provide the services he conducted at the incident command post in Arapahoe. He served as ground support unit leader and was instrumental in managing and inspecting all vehicles and ground equipment on scene. The experience Mark gained in responding to this event will be valuable to Lancaster County when the need arises in the future. This incident would not have been controlled as quickly as it had been without local emergency managers from around the state assisting in various roles. I want to ensure that Mark's time, effort, and expertise does not go unnoticed. This incident was a perfect example of Nebraskans serving Nebraska. I appreciate the part Mark played in getting the fire contained and the incident under control, and we stand ready to do the same in service of our friends and neighbors in Lancaster County as and when the need ever arises. Warmest regards, Erv Portis, Assistant Director, Nebraska Emergency Management Agency.
Well, Mark, congratulations. I've seen you work in a variety of environments and, obviously, well-respected, and all the training paid off in working with emergency managers from that part of the state. You prepare for crisis and stepped up to serve when it was needed, and we're very proud.
Thank you.
So I take the time to recognize you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, Jim.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next is the Commissioner's Award of Excellence for March 2022 to Rachel Schmidt, Paralegal, County Attorney's Office, in the category of Customer Relations.
All right. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, County Board, and my name's Pat Condon, Lancaster County Attorney, and I'm here to recognize Rachel Schmidt. Rachel's been in our office for 15 years, so she does a fantastic job with our customer service with our DV that's kind of sometimes can be a little bit of a difficult clientele to work with, and Rachel does an outstanding job with that clientele. So I'm proud to bring Rachel here today and recognize her for this award.
All right, and again, we have the nomination letter.
Rachel Schmidt has been selected as the Commissioner's Award of Excellence winner for March 2022. Rachel has worked as a paralegal in the county attorney's office since January 10, 2006. She was nominated by Julie Merz in the category Customer Relations. In her nomination, Ms. Merz states Rachel speaks with victims and witnesses every day. As one can imagine, they are not always in the best mood or state of mind when they call our office, but Rachel has a calmness about her as she explains the situation, process, and answers questions. Oftentimes, victims of domestic violence confide in Rachel because they feel comfortable with her, and she can make them feel safe when oftentimes victims feel like they have no one in their corner. She has an uncanny ability to be able to determine whether or not a witness is cooperative. She is very helpful in locating transient witnesses or victims, and then her compassion also helps those witnesses to connect with resources they may need or want. She has done this job day in and day out for over 10 years and never complains. She is helpful with attorneys and reminds us about upcoming deadlines or court dates. She is willing to drop everything to help if something comes up and needs to be completed as soon as possible. She is encouraging and there for coworkers when they just need a shoulder to lean on. She's always working. I hardly ever have to ask her to do things because she just knows how the system works and does things before I even need to ask. She goes above and beyond to make my life easier. She is productive and efficient and is an essential asset to the DV docket in the county attorney's office. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Rachel with the Commissioner's Award of Excellence for the month of March 2022.
I want to present you with this plaque, and thank you for your work, and I appreciate the supervisor who put your name in because it's always great to recognize good employees. But the work that you do to really put those people at ease when it's really challenging times and to gain their trust is not only treating them with dignity and respect that they deserve, but essential to the function of the county attorney's office, and so thank you for your dedicated work.
Thank you.
Have anything you'd like to share?
I didn't prepare anything. It's not always the easiest work, but it's the most necessary work, and I take a lot of pride in what I do. I know everybody works hard in our office, but it's very humbling to receive this, and I thank you all for this. Thank you.
Certainly well-deserved, and then the team of people standing behind you.
Absolutely. I have a lot of support, and that means a lot to me.
You have a few people here.
Lots of family and coworkers, and the attorneys I work with are fabulous, so they're really the core of what I do.
And the one that nominated her, is it a murder trial nominee?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But did you unintroduce?
Yes, my husband's here, Steve, my mom, my mother-in-law, my sister-in-law, my son and his new fiance, my granddaughter's here. Oh, my gosh. Sorry.
Wow. No. That's wonderful, because obviously you don't have support only at the office, but support at home, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, congratulations. We're very proud to have you part of the team.
Thank you.
Next are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of. Amendment to County Contract C-19-555 with NSG Logistics LLC doing business as Nebraska's Salt and Grain for the annual supply of road salt. Right-of-way contracts with the following: Kenneth Jr. and Shawna Housenvelt, West Olive Creek Road and Southwest 14th Street, in amount of $5,230. Larry Jensen and Family Inc., South 176th Street and Roca Road, in amount of $1,931. Men Housenvelt LLC, West Olive Creek Road and Southwest 14th Street, in amount of $1,831. Change order number two to County Contract C-21-510 with Brant S. Abadie &amp; Co. Change order number one to County Contract C-22-206 with Midwest Infrastructure Inc. for plan revision. Received and placed on file the following reports for April 2022. Assessor, Register of Deeds, Records and Information Management, Clerk of the District Court, and County Clerk.
Move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve the consent items. Call a roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number five, new business. Five A is a contract with Barry Dunn to provide strategic plan and services. The cost accounted is not to exceed $89,290.
Well, if I could speak to this, of course, okay. You know, for several years, the county board has discussed the desirability of developing a long-range strategic plan, one that would provide vision and core values and the means to measure metrics also. So it was a strategic plan not only would inform the public of what the direction is that the county board would wish to go, but also the employees. So it is with a great deal of pleasure that I move that we approve this contract.
Second.
I feel like we've heard about this before, but I would just say I'm genuinely excited, and I appreciate Commissioner Amundson's perseverance in getting us to this point, but what I'm hearing about this is really exciting for a lot of reasons, so glad we got to this point.
Appreciate your commitment to getting to this point.
Well, thank you.
Call a roll, please.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. B is a request for an exceptional circumstance award under Personnel Rule 17-9, Bracket B, for Leah Dupont, juvenile detention supervisor, for one-step pay increase.
Questions regarding this item?
No, I will move for approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call a roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
She is departed.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five C is a recommendation from Personnel Policy Board for the following: Request to create the classification of crime analyst, and request to create County Rule 17-25, dog handler pay.
Want to address this, or you're just for any questions?
I'm here if you have any questions on that. So we were doing these together then, Deb, is that right? We had a presentation on number one in particular. Ben gives a very thorough explanation of what the sheriff's department's doing and the reasons for it, and I just thought it was a really well-laid-out plan, so I'm going to recommend approval of both of these.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We should have the dogs come.
We should have a presentation.
We should have a special presentation.
My first thought was, you get paid to handle dogs?
This was for Sarah.
Right. Who we also had a presentation about.
Yeah, and that's another, we do look forward to that.
True. All right, call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson. Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D is a special designated license application from Sisasa Shrine Holding Corporation to hold an outdoor event at the Sisasa Shrine Temple on August 20, 2022.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item?
I'm here if you have any questions on the options.
Something that's been done frequently there, and they've done those well, so I move approval.
Second. Oh, I can't second.
At this rate, we'll be down another one.
I'll second it.
All right, call the roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is a resolution in a matter of closure of Bridge S-180 located on Roca Road between South 82nd Street and South 96th Street.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The map that I've put, excuse me, the map that I've placed on the overhead shows the location of Bridge S-180. You may recall that S-180 was one of the bridges that I talked about in last year's budget as being one of our critical bridges. It was one of three bridges built under a federal aid project in 1958. A couple weeks ago, we observed a significant void behind the abutment of this bridge. In addition, we noted cracking above and settlement above the bridge. This bridge is rated poor. It has a number of issues. It's not a good candidate for any sort of repair at this point, and so due to the critical finding of a significant void behind the abutment, I'm recommending that this bridge be closed. In addition, I would like to state that even though money wasn't allocated for the design of the bridge this year, we moved around some funds, and there are projects that we didn't do in the current budget year so that we could start the engineering on this bridge. So we have started the engineering on this bridge, and the consultant has agreed to compress the schedule by three months. However, a bridge takes a year to design, and permitting takes a minimum of a year for these types of structures, especially when there are special utilities and additional special permits because we have flood pools ponding back through the bridge. So we don't expect the engineering to be done on this new bridge until the first week in December of this year, which means hopefully that we can get the utilities relocated for construction next year if this bridge is funded.
Never a good thing to close a bridge, but for the safety of the people, I move approval.
I'll second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five F is a resolution in a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign the Task Order Agreement with Felsberg, Holt, and Ullvig for NAPA services.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So the rest of my agenda items are more happy than that one, just for the record. Northwest 56th Street is located in between I-80 and Northwest 56th Street. This item and the preceding three items have to do with the federal aid project for Northwest 56th Street for the pavement of it, and in our office, Mr. Legg likes to refer to this as paying for the scoping of the scope. There's a lot of different steps to federal aid projects, and so this is four, four more steps associated with this project as we continue to march along.
I'll move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is on-call professional service task order agreement with Felsberg, Holt, and Ullvig for NAPA services in the amount of $11,197.40.
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. H is a resolution in a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign a professional service agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering services.
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five I is a professional services agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for Lancaster County to perform scoping, preliminary engineering services in a total amount of $2,893.60.
Move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five J is a contract with Subsurface Inc. to provide North 14th Street CIPP culvert liners. The cost to the county is not to exceed $308,480.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So we've been talking about North 14th Street for a significant period of time in Lancaster County. We've replaced several box culverts and several bridges. We have a few more to go in this corridor. There's a newer technology out there that we haven't used in Lancaster County before, which is basically taking a fiberglass material and baking it on to an existing pipe with an ultraviolet light, in other words, culvert lining. We haven't done this before in the county. In the past, it's been rather cost prohibitive, but since steel pipe has gone up 300% and is not available, and because we have interrupted the residents in this corridor many times over the last several years, we thought we would try pipelining in these locations on North 14th Street, as well as a few locations in southwest Lancaster County. So we're excited to get to this, and we think it's going to be a great alternative application to cutting, open-cutting pavement.
All right, move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is an interlocal agreement with the Village of Hallam to allow work on Southwest 42nd Street.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Last week, I had the honor of attending the Village of Hallam board meeting, and they have one question about this project, how soon can you get it done? This is, of course, Southwest 42nd Street. There is a little piece of this road where they recently annexed in their fire barn that is within the Village of Hallam, so this is an interlocal agreement so that we can provide that pavement to the intersection at this location. We have been in contact with the contractor for this job. It is a 30-working-day job, and they believe they'll start sometime the first week in June.
Move approval.
Yeah, second.
All right, well, that's good news.
Yeah, it is.
Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. L is a contract with Top Coat Inc. for chip seal 2022. The cost to the county is not to exceed $919,569.73.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The exhibit that I've placed on the overhead shows the three locations where we intend to do chip seal this year: North 14th Street, North 148th Street, and a little piece of Hallam Road just west of the Village of Hallam. As we have previously discussed, chip sealing is a way for us to extend the life of the surface of the asphalt, three to five years. Commissioner Vest may recall that it's been about three or four years since we did 148th Street, so it's time, and with the amount of traffic on it, it's time to do that again. We are doing everything we can at County Engineering to extend the life of these slabs as long as possible before we have to do either a full-depth replacement or milling two to three inches off to get stabilization. Of course, the end goal is, yes, no potholes. I don't know if I'll ever truly reach that goal, but we're getting incrementally closer.
So when we do a project like this, we have to shut, we go to one lane of traffic, or do we shut the road down completely, Pam? What, how does this work?
Typically, with these projects, go to one lane of traffic. In addition, what we discovered the first time we did this project, this type of a project, that we tried to slow traffic down in the corridor, and we couldn't get people to slow down, and then they're speeding over the chips that we roll in while they're still loose, and we had a lot of issues. We've worked with the public, we've installed additional signs, and we've sent out additional notifications, and so we have not had those sort of issues in recent years, but that's the process. So it is all done under open traffic.
Okay.
On one lane, that doesn't mean, you know, you won't have delays. We do put a maximum delay time in our specifications at County Engineering. I personally do go out and test that once in a while, because you don't necessarily know that's how it's working until you're in the lane that stopped, so it is something that we check on.
Well, we, it's well-discussed, the volume of traffic on 148th Street, and you use, like, I assume it's a pilot car situation so that we keep everybody under control moving?
We do use a pilot car and flaggers.
Yeah. And what kind of notice, how much advance notice are we able to give folks on projects like this?
You know, typically, we try to give people one to two weeks, and of course, that's always weather-dependent, that if a weather event happens, it may take the contractor a little longer to show up. Also, sometimes with the contractors, you know, they might have a project that doesn't work out the way they think it's going to, and once in a while, it does happen, they do show up early, to start early, and so we try not to surprise people with that and keep them informed to the best of our ability.
We all know how people hate surprises, so letting them know is a big deal. I will move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five M is a grant contract to reimburse the National Museum of Roller Skating for promotional costs from visitors, promotion funding amount not to exceed $4,252.
I cannot believe we don't have someone here to present on this this morning, the national, I've been there. It's really cool, but I will move approval of Five M.
Promotional costs, they're going to do some additional advertising and billboards to get more people to visit, so money well-spent. Call the roll, please.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. N are grant contracts using ARPA funds with the following: Center for People in Need in amount of $130,000, Center Point in amount of $3 million, and Child Advocacy Center in amount of $500,000.
I move approval.
I will second. I know the process for this, these funds was very competitive, and there were a lot of great plans presented, and there was very thorough scrutiny, and hard decisions had to be made on choosing who got funds allocated. I really commend those who worked so hard to get us to the point of deciding who was going to get funding and for what, so I second.
It's important to get this money into their hands to do the good work that's needed now.
Right.
Exactly. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. O is a grant contract with the Nebraska State Bar Association for the tenant assistance project assist and emergency rental assistance program for households that are unable to pay rent and utilities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The cost to the county is $43,500.
I move approval.
Second.
Again, this is important work, and glad we can get the money out to have those with legal expertise, support those that are potentially under an eviction status. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five P is a contract with 360 Health Services LLC for the annual supply of COVID-19 rapid test kits. The cost to the county is not to exceed $49,000.
Move approval.
Second. Call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Q is an agreement with Precise MRM LLC for GPS tracking hardware and software for county assessor vehicles. The cost to the county is $5,278.
Scott's here if we want to ask him anything.
Just give us the 32nd version.
This is a contract to put GPS back in the vehicles. For a while, we had tested using GPS in the devices that the staff takes out in the field that proved problematic on many different angles, so this is to put the GPS back in the vehicles for safety of our employees, being able to verify where they are if we get a call from the public. It's a, I would mention, we're piggybacking on a city It's a, I would mention, we're piggybacking on a city contract, so the pricing is excellent on this deal, so.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
I move approval. Thank you, Scott.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. R is a contract with Lamar Advertising Company for digital advertising for the Department of Corrections. The cost to county is $1,400.
And this is for that digital billboard in the very high-traffic area just a block away. I move approval.
I second.
Okay. Let's hope it's amazingly successful, and we get a great pool of candidates. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, non-agenda may do so at this time.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, could you continue with the agenda, please?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May 12, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will tour the Center Point located at 2,200 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, on Friday, May 13, 2022, at 1:30 p.m. The County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, at 9 a.m. with the Board of Equalization and Department Budget hearings immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rig broadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV, YouTube, Roku, and Apple TV.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Motion is second to adjourn. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.